All right, Jean, are you taking it away?
Okay, so shall we go ahead and start with Jake since he's here and might want to escape?
Sure, sure. Do you, do you have any questions for me, anything specifically that you want me to talk about?
Hold on. I don't, I don't, I'm sorry Jake, I don't know you. Can you tell us who you are?
I'm Jake Waldsmith. Although my real name is William Waldsmith, if that matters, I'm the transportation coordinator for the district.
And, and basically what we'd like to know is what you have found out in looking at all of the transportation problems that arise from grade bands.
Okay. Okay. So I think the big one for grade bands would be that you're not going to be able to have students, you're not going to be able to geographically pick up kids without either adding a lot more buses or having pickup and drop off windows or having all of the elementary schools specifically start at different times. I think that that's you know, kind of, kind of obvious why that would be the case. And there needs to be some consideration around in-town routes. Sorry, I just saw something in the chat. Oh. And, and by that, I mean, a lot of the kids who like kindergarten and preschool kids, for example, if they were going to Four Corners and they would normally be within walking distance to federal streets.
Oh, I was just like, what?
Mary, can you?
It's very attractive, ma'am, surely.
Mary, can you mute? I muted.
Sorry.
Kids that would normally be within walking distance to say Federal Street School that would then require a bus to say Four Corners. If they were, you know, kindergarten, first grade and they were required to, to go there. I think that there are different creative ways that you could work around problems like that from a transportation perspective. But, you know, that's something that I think the school committee and Christine would have to, to work on if it would be feasible or if, you know, you need to add another bus. And then also just thinking about considerations with the walker rider policy, I think that that's going to make a big difference on your, your transportation needs. And then lastly, just some of the areas, the potential for those buses being really crowded. And if you, it's, if one bus is then going to say Four Corners, Newton, Federal Street, that is going to add time to the child's bus ride. And the potential for behavioral problems there with just having them, having, you know, a crowded bus full of kids for fifteen to twenty to, you know, maybe even thirty minutes on a bad day extra on a bus ride. Those are, I think, the main transportation considerations really for the grade band option that I, I noticed.
And, and what would we do about things like one child is in first grade and the other sister or brother is in the third grade? Would they all, would they both be picked up at the same time? I mean, how, how did things like that work out?
So that's, that's why it's if all of the schools start at the same time, then yeah, that would be, that would obviously be a huge problem because you'd have a bus that needs to go and pick up that student and then another bus that needs to come and pick up the sibling. That's obviously the, the huge issue. But if the schools start ten minutes apart, you can then pick up both siblings in one bus, go to the first child's school and then go to the sibling's school. So it really depends on considerations with start and end times.
So basically what you're saying is this is going to be expensive? If we need to do more buses and?
Yeah. Yeah, if you needed to. Yes, you would, there's, if, if they all started at the same time, then yes, you would definitely need to add more buses and those buses are not cheap. So yeah, it would be expensive.
If in fact, the bus company has additional buses available for us.
Very true.
Yeah. Okay, so otherwise we have to stagger the times of, and what do you do about middle school and high school? And the buses, I mean, how does that work?
Middle and high school, really, it's not, it's not a huge issue because there is kind of a, a drop off window with those schools right now. I think Christine can speak to some of the issues that we've had at the end of the day in terms of having staff members leaving while buses are at the high school picking up kids and then they have to go to the middle school and pick up, you know, the, the rest of the middle schoolers that are on their route. So that, that is already a challenge, but it's being done in kind of the only way that you can do it without adding more buses, which is the kids have to wait at the end of the day for the bus to get to them.
I think to some degree, you know, the, the scenario Jake's identifying with with middle school, high school, it's a little bit easier to deal with delayed pickup times. So half around half of our buses start at the middle school, around half of them start at the high school. And then, you know, they switch, go pick up the ones at the high school, leave, go to the middle school and vice versa. Middle school students and high school students certainly have a little bit more ability to wait independently or with less adult supervision than elementary school students might have. And so if regardless, if we have staggered pickup, drop off times, you know, there would be, we, we could, we believe accommodate that, but it would potentially require some staff having different work schedules or potentially to have some staff work fifteen to thirty minutes extra at the end of the day to supervise the bus time after the official end of the school day. You know, certainly if that's the best choice, we can, you we can look into what that would look like if we're changing pickup and drop off times, we'd have to talk, we'd have to look at our contracts to make sure there's no contractual issues that could come up from changing any of the times. But you know, the supervision, if we need to do stagger times, you know, we've talked about potential options, but again, there there would be some financial impact, we believe, although potentially not, not as much as adding a bus.
And is there a possibility that you would do the elementary schools first? And, and what impact would that have if that were something that we were considering?
So.
So you're talking about switching.
I spoke to the superintendents who did that work in two local districts. And both districts did it coming right out of the pandemic. So when they came back to in-person learning, their new start time had already been adjusted. And secondly, they are finding some pretty significant issues with after-school care for the elementary students because their older siblings are still at school. And the other piece is some not insignificant costs associated with athletic transportation because some of the buses for the districts that usually would be available to do the athletic runs are still transporting students. So, you know, one of the districts talked about at least seventy-five thousand dollars a year in added transportation costs for athletics.
Ooh.
Yes. So that, given all the details around the reorganizing that we've been talking about under option one, once hearing all of those impacts for changing the high school times, I didn't do any additional exploration, but certainly if that's something that you folks want to happen, I can I can put more time into that.
Right. Glenn, Elizabeth, would you like to ask questions too?
Um, are, um, yes, but first on the agenda, it does say that we're having public comment and I noticed that there are people here. Are we doing that? Are we changing the agenda or?
Well, when, when we started, there was no public key.
Okay.
So we can let the public talk at the end if they would like to.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just wasn't sure. I didn't hear a roll call or public comment when I got on, so I just wanted to check. I'm formulating some questions and I'll probably have some shortly.
You mean for Jake, about the busing? Okay, Glenn?
No questions at the moment. Thank you. I'm catching up a little after my audio wasn't working. So thanks for bearing with me.
Sorry about that. Did you miss things that you would like for us to go back over again?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I can catch the recording later.
And forever, whatever it's worth, you can probably hear me taping away. I am doing some minutes, so. But you can obviously watch the recording.
Okay. Is there anything else related to this that, that we need to be asking Christine?
I'm thinking about in terms of the current option one. I think what we would really be balancing is if we leave and Jake, you obviously yelled, if my summary is missing something. I think the pieces that we're sort of balancing at this stage is if we leave the current times as they are for pickup and drop off, we run the risk of needing additional buses. Even if we don't need additional buses, we likely would need to see if we can find bus monitors due to the added number of students on all of the buses and the extended bus times. So it's sort of that, do we, do we look into whether or not we can even get a bus from Kismas Kus if we need one? The cost of added staffing? Or the alternative is, do we look at staggering pickup and drop off times, which might allow more flexibility with the bus routes? And not necessarily require an additional bus, but would the way administratively, we've sort of looked at the option at this point is would likely incur costs to have some staff, not all staff, but some staff available in the morning and in the afternoon due to the extended pickup and drop off time. So it's either some cost per salary, you know, hourly rates during the extended pickup and drop off or potentially at least one more bus and/or some monitors. Jake, did I get it right?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think you got it right. The only thing that I would add is just thinking about the current walker rider policy that could, there is still the potential based on whatever's decided regarding that, that could cause there to be a need for an additional bus as well as thinking about the current walkers who will now be riders and how we're going to get those kids picked up as well.
And, and so basically, if I have two children in two different elementary schools, they would both be picked up at the same time. Under the scenario that we're talking about, it would be dropping them off separately. How do you time that? Somebody would have to be at the schools is the bottom line, right?
Yes.
Right. That's where we come up with the added salaries is to have, have folks there earlier. So if, for example, I'm totally making things up for the sake of the discussion. If you had a first grader and a third grader picked up on Main Street at the same time on the same bus, one of them would get to their school first. The other student would stay on the bus, get to their school after. So there could be staff at the first grade building supervising before school because the drop off window is that much earlier than the start of school. And then the same on the other end, one would get picked up sooner, but that means potentially the pickup time at home is a little bit earlier to allow for the twenty to thirty minutes extra potentially on the bus routes so that we can do drop offs at all three schools.
So Elizabeth, do you, are you ready with your questions?
Um. It just sounds like such a nightmare. And, um. So our current walker policy, if I'm correct, is that if they live within a mile of the school, they walk, right? Just.
Exactly.
Right?
He, it's a little different, Elizabeth, and it changes for different grade levels. Let me, let me pull it up so that I can say exactly what it is for us.
Okay.
I do have take to my wall as well.
Well, Jake, then, why don't you read your decorations?
So for, for Greenfield's School Committee, kindergarten through grade six, students living more than one and a half miles from school. And then grade seven through twelve, students living more than two miles from their school, there are a lot of exemptions and Christine or whoever the superintendent is, has the discretion to make those exemptions, but that is what the current school committee policy is for walkers and riders.
So you're saying maybe that if we went with option one, we would be eliminating that and everyone is gonna get picked up? Is what you're, I'm, if I'm confused, please.
I think what some of the situations are, Elizabeth, I think some students would be walkers to different schools. Depending their location, some students would be riders regardless. But right now, there are some exemptions where we have buses running to areas that are closer to schools than what the policy allows.
Right.
So that certainly would, would impact the walker rider. For example, I know we have some, a route that goes to Newton, right Jake? That's closer than the school committee policy identifies. So if the school committee reviewed and chose to hold to the letter of the policy, then that would affect who from that geographic area might going forward walk to Newton versus being rider? If they were assigned at Newton for whatever grades they were there.
I understand. I'm just trying to imagine, I mean, as a bus driver, I'm trying to imagine what the day would be like because I'm imagining going to all of these schools, even though I only, I mean, I go to three schools now, but I'm imagining going to even more elementary schools. And I'm just, and I can see how it would work in the morning. Like I get that with the stagger times, but I'm wondering about the afternoon and how that's going to impact parents because some kids who are young cannot be dropped off unless their parents are there. So they would have multiple siblings potentially being dropped off with a parent present and then you'd have to go back later and then you'd bring the high school. Like I'm just trying to imagine what will happen when the inevitable occurs and a parent isn't present and then the buses have to go back to the schools. Like I can just see it being kind of a lot of driving around and sort of a nightmare. Not that I can't imagine that it's possible, but I'm trying to think about what happens when you have that, those problems that always will occur.
So we have those issues now.
Right.
So. Yeah, right. So we, we deal with those now. I think, I think that you just said high school, we dropped off later, but I don't think that's the scenario current. I think.
Right. So is it gonna stay the way that it is now where it's middle school and then high school and then we'd go and we'd get all of these individual groups of elementary? Is that?
That's what we're working with.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. All right. This is, this is a messy, messy part of it.
Yeah. One thing I will. I'm sorry, Elizabeth, go ahead.
No, no, I'm just explaining the, the messy difficulties of this.
We have been invited to go explore the bus scenario in a district that does do grade band buildings. That is bigger than us. Jake and I have been offered that opportunity. So this is an option that you folks still want to consider. We can do that. One of you could come if you'd like. And we can sort of see the mechanics of our bigger district does this same type of situation.
Okay, great. That's, that's wonderful to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. And so it's just the messiness of it. It's a little confusing right now, but it could be worked out. If, if this is the option that we decide to use.
I, I think, and you know, Jake, obviously you, you've been doing all the route, all the routing around this. I think that any of the options that would need to be considered can be explored in more detail if they're still of interest to you, like us going to see how it works. Looking at, you know, talking, if this is still something you folks want me to pursue, I can talk to the union to see if they have any concerns they can think of off the top of their heads that would be related to potentially modifying any times related to the school day, or is it just pickup and drop off? Like we can, we can do more work, but knowing that we can explore with Kismas Kus, do they have an extra bus if we need it? We can do another layer of detail gathering if this is still something that you want to keep on the table.
And, and I do think that it is possible to do the grade band option with the current number of buses. If we do do these staggered starts, if we really think about the walker rider policy and potentially, you know, having a, a really centralized location for current walkers at schools to go to, to get picked up. Again, I don't know how that's going to work on the other end in terms of supervision and everything else that Christine has to work with, with the unions and, and everything else, but I do think that it is, it is possible from a transportation perspective.
Okay. And again, Glenn, have you got anything you want to add to the conversation on busing?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And Elizabeth, do you have anything else?
No, I, I mean, honestly, I didn't know that this is going to be a transportation specific meeting. Otherwise I would have done a little bit of research. I did make the suggestion to Kismas Kus that they come today and try to do some public comment because I know that they're involved. So I don't, I don't feel prepared because I did not know that this was transport specific today. So I may have questions that I'll have to email later.
I mean, we're going to talk about a bunch of things today. This is just one of the, because really and truly, the problem that we have is getting the fifth grade out of the middle school and the eighth grade out of the high school. And we're sort of losing sight of that, I think, in the community. Going forward and seeing if we can brainstorm around other options. And, and Christine, I have not sat down and looked at the NASDAQ study to see if a group of the elementary school could be put in the middle school and then move the middle school like into Federal Street. I mean, I, I'm just asking if there are other options or have you thought of ways to get the fifth grade in any way? Or is it cheaper to open Green River? I mean, let's make it a huge, big.
Yeah. So one of the things that Jake and Karen and I have actually talked about a little bit is a little bit of a mashup of a couple of the options because we have the declining enrollment anticipated. We have the anticipated declining enrollment. One of the things that we're working on to see if it is in fact feasible is if we could somewhat combine redistricting the elementary schools. Meaning change the geographic area that is routed to each elementary school to make make the population a, a better representation of the community across all three elementary schools. And if we do that, do our numbers allow us to move fifth grade back? And what are the repercussions of that? So so that's, that's something that we're doing the math on. It's a little bit bigger of a project for Jake.
I do, I do have some numbers for you now. So so what we, what we looked at was taking Lyden Woods, which is closer to Four Corners, having the fifth grade there as, as well, but having everybody in Lyden Woods attend Four Corners as opposed to where they're going right now, which is Federal Street. And then having Oak Courts, which it is still closer to Newton. Newton is their closest school, but it's only about a tenth of a mile of a difference. So in the interest of kind of dispersing the students and making it as even as possible throughout the district, we had Oak Courts go to Federal Street and then the students at Greenfield Gardens were going to Newton, which is where they, they currently attend. And this was based on beginning of the year enrollment. So, you know, the, the numbers are high, but what I had was you end up with about two hundred and eighty-nine students at Four Corners, two hundred and eleven at Newton and two forty-one at Federal Street School, which that's obviously you're adding another grade, so it's higher than it is at, at any of the, the different school districts, but, or any of the different area schools. But that's, that's what you get for, for numbers. And again, like Christine said, the potential for declining enrollment would bring those numbers down somewhat.
What I'm looking at is the optimal enrollment at each of the elementary schools based on the NASDAQ and planned operating capacity. And planned operating capacity at, oops, sorry, wrong school. Planned operating capacity at Four Corners. Was. Two sixty-one. So we would still need to do potentially a little work on that, Jake, maybe looking at. Next year's anticipated numbers.
Yeah, and and the other, the other thing that I wanna just make totally clear that when I was working on this, like there are. Students, there are school choice students who are in the fifth grade, who are at the middle school. I included them in this and I put them. Tried to put them as evenly as possible at Newton and Federal Street because Four Corners obviously had the the most students. But I don't know what would happen to those school choice spots as we. Progressed through this. I also don't know about any of the interdistrict choice and how that would be. Um, honored, obviously the policy in in previous years. Um, so that that might affect the numbers too, and is also something to think about.
So you, as as you and I um, talked about briefly. Jake did some of this math just to begin the conversation to see if. You folks thought it was worth continuing to do the conversation um, to get more details. So if this is an option that is appealing, we can go back to. Um, the numbers look potentially at next year's enrollment. You know, we have some shifts happening in some grade levels. Like Four Corners, I apologize, my paper's over there, Four Corners is losing a fourth grade. Correct me, Karen, losing a fourth grade, so um. Just due to the the bubble, as we call it, that rolls up due to enrollment at a in a particular year. So um. We can look again using next year's anticipated enrollment. See if we can get Four Corners down to, I'm sorry, to the um, planned operating enrollment. Or planned operating capacity that NASDAQ had. And then, again, if that's, if that's an attractive option, then we can start taking. Pretend, pretend classrooms and putting them in pretend spaces for the sake of of beginning to plan to see if it's feasible.
Well, would children, would would the school committee need to talk about whether or not children can continue? Chosing into the schools? I mean, how would we handle that part of the whole thing?
So Jake, you were talking about intra-district choice, correct?
Well, well, both. So there are some children that have choiced into the middle school. And for the the purpose of this, I kept them in the district. Didn't exactly know where where to put them because there's not a neighborhood school for somebody that lives in Amherst. So it, you know, I don't know how those slots would be distributed. For this particular option and interdistrict choice. It's primarily a Four Corners, just being honest about that. It's it's a lot of kids that are are there, so. Yeah, it's it's really both.
At this point, in terms of intra-district, so within the district. The only um, I have not allowed new enrollments to go into a non-neighborhood elementary school. Except incoming kindergarteners who will still have a sibling. At the school they would like to attend. So if a student intra-district choice into Four Corners. And they will still be at Four Corners next year, I have allowed their kindergarten sibling to come in. But that's, that's the only intra-district choice that I've approved. So that we can better balance kindergarten enrollments. That's how that has worked out. Mike has shared. He thinks that um, is a factor in seeing a little bit more space at Four Corners. Choice in um, in inter-district choice. We would um, have to look at that, you know, the principals would look at what their enrollment looks like. And um, for not this upcoming school year, but for the following, could certainly make different recommendations. To me about school choice slots based on what their um, anticipated population would look like. It could, Jean, affect how many seats we open, if any?
Right, and. And would children uh, to make this happen? We we now have children who are in kindergarten who might have choiced into one of the in, from within Greenfield. Would we allow them to continue in that school or would we make it all neighborhood? Based, I mean, you know, that's another, and and we don't make that decision today, but. I I I'm just saying, is that how it would ideally work out?
We also have sort of hypothesized. Do you, do you think about grandfathering in the kids that are already in the school? So from Jake's example, if we um, going forward had. Um, the Lyden Woods neighborhood routed to Four Corners and Oak Courts to Federal Street. Do we allow the students from those current neighborhoods who would like to remain at the school they are currently attending? Until they age out. Um, you know, that, or do you just say next year, this is the new school and you make a change? Um, those are both options, certainly the option of letting people choose to remain where they are until they age out. Complicates a little bit of the math on this, but.
And busing.
Right.
You are definitely some of the math, Jake, that's for sure. But those are, you know, those are options to consider if you just do a clean change or do you allow a transition? Or do you allow a transition for third and fourth grade, but not for K one, two? I I don't know, that's.
Yeah, it's a, it's a conundrum, isn't it? Okay, Elizabeth, if you got anything you want to add to this discuss, part of the discussion?
Um. So. And not to put a wrench in it, but have we thought about? And maybe you were just talking about this, I'm not sure. What if some of the schools are K through five and some are K through four? I mean, is there a way to? Do that at all? Have we thought about that as another option? Um, do we have an idea of what our population of fifth graders is going to be like in the next year? Because the problem originally was that we had too many fifth graders, right? We needed to put them in the middle school in order to, because of space considerations, right? And we've all, I think we're all on the same page agreeing that fifth has to go back, eighth has to go in the middle, and we want the high school to be nine through twelve. So I'm just spitballing here. Have we thought about making, is that even a possibility? To have each elementary school be different? I mean, it's hard to say to the public, we don't have the space to do this, but also we have a declining population. I mean, I'm just curious. Is that contraindicated or?
Can I ask a question? Elizabeth, can I ask what um? What are you, what's your thinking around having the different? I I want to answer you, but I want to understand the problem you're solving.
I don't know that I'm solving a problem. I've been. My mind with this because I don't think, I know we're not gonna make everybody happy, right? There are going to be be people that are gonna be unhappy with whatever we decide. And there are people that are for these options that we're talking about, option one, and there's people against it. So I'm just trying to sort of play as many devil's advocates in my brain as I can about what could be possible. That maybe we haven't discussed, so that at the end of the day, we can say that we really turned over every stone. You know?
I think that's why we kind of talked about, do we? Do we combine the ideas of um, trying to do K to five? But I know one, one of the members of of this subcommittee, I don't remember which which one of you had made reference to. If we just get fifth grade into the elementaries, it doesn't address the issue. That sort of came to the forefront first when I got here was that we don't have a a distribution across all the elementary schools. That represents the the community. So then we really have to bring in the element of realigning. The areas for each of our elementary schools. Um, so that's, we were kind of trying to combine what people were prioritizing. Um. I think we would have, well, I don't think, I know we would have to do a lot more investigation um, into some of the details. If that is an option that's attractive to the committee, we can do more work. Um. And see if that shakes out.
Well, if we're, if we're trying to mirror the community in each of the elementary schools. And not doing the grade bands, it appears to me that when we start this new um. Way of approaching the schools, we would have to then. Say you have to go to this school because you're in this band. And and cut out, I mean, either way, the children will have a. An abrupt end to the complacency that they have right now. If if we change the whole system, I mean, otherwise we can just leave everything like it is. I'm just trying to again be the person speaking the truth here that nobody wants to.
No, I hear you. It's just, it seems like there's like four really big problems and I don't ne- necessarily think we can solve them all. So I often find myself thinking of which one is truly more important, you know? Is it the moving the grades or is it the equity issue or is it the money issue like? This is a, this is a tangled, tangled thing. And so I I find myself thinking of all the solutions I can possibly think of, even if they're ridiculous. Because there's so many factors to consider.
I could add something. I think that um, sometimes when we're faced with choices and. They all feel equally balanced with pros and cons on different sides. Um. It's an indication that we just have to kind of. Take, make a choice, you know, I I think that's kind of. The, it's difficult in this situation because as people are saying, there are so many different. Factors to balance and and things that we want and. Um, I guess I would be looking for. Maybe, maybe it does make sense to rank um, in weight the problems that we're trying to solve. Um, and to do that as a, as a full committee. Um, I think that it would be important to know whether whether the committee as a whole thinks that. Um. You know, the the students being in schools that aren't really appropriate for their grade. Is the most important, or if the. Um, geographic distribution of students across the district is the most important. And I think looking at that through a lens of student outcomes, I know that there's research that shows that. Integrated student bodies do better academically than ones where there is segregation by class. Um, meaning economic class. Um, I don't know what, what data we have on economic out, on academic outcomes. For, you know, having students in, for example, having the, you know, the eighth grade in the high school. I don't know what, what that, you know, what we know about the academics in terms of that, so. Um, but I I think that may be one way that we could look is having the full committee make some decisions. About what the priorities are to help us guide in our decision-making.
And I think that is our job is to take back all of the choices to the school committee and and discuss it. And prioritize it as a school committee, but I just want to make sure that we've all. Thought of every question that we can think of so that Christine's head is twisting around. Because that in, that is the bottom line, is no one is going to be happy with the choice. And I'm, I'm just saying that if we, if we keep the schools as they are and bring the fifth grade back. I do think that we will have to do the. Redistricting, drawing the lines differently. And make everybody then start, you know, after next year in a school that maybe they aren't in right now. Sure, go ahead.
Can I ask, does that mean that you folks would like us to continue getting more detailed information? About the um, move boundary lines for each school and see if we can get. Um, see if we can make it seem reasonable to put fifth grade back in? Do you want us to continue doing research on that um, new option? Or and or continue doing research on option one?
What are you, are you saying, I'm sorry, are you saying that continue research? When you say bring the middle, bring the fifth grade back, are you saying bring the fifth grade back into grade band schools? Are you saying bring the fifth grade back into elementary across the board and just redistrict the lines?
Uh, sorry, thank you. Um, what I'm saying is if you confirm that you want me to continue looking at. Redrawing uh, lines for each building and then bring the fifth grade into what would be then the new neighborhood school. So it, three K to five schools, but new lines drawn.
I think in looking at the option one and option two, that uh. We have to show the community that we are seriously trying to. Keep a, a disparate age group in the schools, which they, because they seem to feel that. If we put K one together, they will not have any peers to model themselves after. And and they need to know that if we do what they want and bring the fifth grade back. That this, that they may not be in the school that they would like to be in, in the future. You, I I just think that people, everybody needs to understand the ramifications of these two choices.
Right.
And I don't mean get into the weeds on bringing research, but I think that the school committee has to. Make the choice on which direction you go as far as getting into the weeds goes. But I think we need to show the community that we will try both ways of handling the situation. And and here are the pluses and minuses of it. I mean, and and I'm not trying to be a dictator. I'm just asking Glenn and and Elizabeth, do you agree with that approach? Or do you, and 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 after that, we need to talk about options three and four. Which uh, Christine has done some research on too. So we will go back with a, a diverse group of choices for the school committee. Uh, but but I just wanted. I wanted to get us on board with if we do option two, which a lot of people seem to feel is the perfect way to go. That the, their child may not be going to, let's say, Four Corners in the future. Their child may be going to Newton or their child may be going to Federal. And and if that is more, if it's more important to them to have. Uh, modeling of older children. Modeling of older children, which I think is what I keep hearing. If that's more important than having all children together. Then we have to do it in a way that each school reflects the, the. Makeup of the community. So. Do you agree, disagree?
I agree. That's some data I think that we haven't explored that would be really important to have. Just to have an idea.
Well, I don't think we get into the weeds, I think.
No, we don't have to get into the weeds, like you said, but just to be able to say. If we go with this option, this is how it will affect you. If we go with this option, this is how it will affect you. That's part of, I think, just our due diligence. So we haven't talked about the. The redrawing of the lines and making three K to five schools. And I think that that is an idea that's very palatable to the community. People like that idea, so. It would be good to show them what happens if we do that idea.
Right, and I think that there will be ramifications on either option and they should be.
Right.
Because we have to draw lines to make the number of children, first of all, fit into the fiscal facility and. We want to reflect the nature of the school. And, and. Glenn, do you want to add anything before we go on to four, to three and four?
Just that the superintendent had asked about. Whether we wanted her to look into. X or Y or both, and I was in the both camp on that. I don't remember the particular. Items you were citing at the time, but it sounded important that we have that information.
Is it okay with you folks if I call it's option one, which is what we've been doing? And then I've sort of been referencing a modified option two. Where it's not just redistricting, but it's redistricting and. Getting grade five in, so I. I can describe that a little bit more in the minutes, but that's kind of my. Reference point, or we can name it option five. Whatever you think is better for communication.
Option two plus or option two B.
Two B, okay, that, I think that works. If, if that works for everybody, that works for me.
It works for me.
Whatever makes your job easier, Christina.
I. A magic eight ball for this choice makes my job easier, but thank you. All right, we'll do option one and option two B. Okay, so we will continue doing research.
And then whenever you're ready. Perhaps you can share with us about the. Building onto schools. Or a new school, which would be three and four, right?
Yes. So there's two pieces. I was able to have a phone call with a representative from the Mass. State Building Authority around the process for. Doing substantial renovation on buildings or building a new school. And the first thing that happens is. We have to do a statement of interest. So to submit a statement of interest, it's not a complicated. Application, but we would have to somewhat identify what the problem is. We would have to pick a school. When I talked with them, I gave the scenario that we were potentially looking at three elementary schools that might need. Work to accommodate. You know, changing populations and we still have to, we would have to pick one school. And make that our focal point for the discussion I had. For the sake of discussion with them, so you know, I would pick Federal Street just due to the size and the elevators and, and all of that, but. So we submit a statement of interest. If we are accepted into the program. They come out fairly quickly, review our facilities. And then let us know which ones of the options we will be able to pursue for a feasibility study. So we could say we'd like to renovate, again, this is just for an example. We'd like to renovate Federal Street or build a new school. And they could come out and say. You can pursue renovating Federal Street, but you can't pursue. A new school for feasibility, or they could say the opposite, or they could tell us we can pursue both. So they would come out and let us know what we are eligible to continue pursuing. At that point, if we get accepted for the feasibility study. We, I say we, the city, the schools. Would have to pay upfront. For the cost of the feasibility study. What they said is it could be one to $2 million. And then we are eligible for. Partial reimbursement. Depending on our level of free and reduced lunch eligibility and primarily that's the. Criteria used. It could be anywhere between, I think they said 20 and 70%. I have a note, but. Rather than. Go through all that paper right now, but we could get reimbursed, but there would be outlay by the. City or schools of anywhere between one to $2 million. And that would be for the feasibility study. And then after that, you know, we would continue down the road of doing potentially whatever, but it would have to be. The feasibility study would give much more detailed information. It would, you know, include some architectural information, cost information. And then we would have to move to determine if in fact the project could get funded. So.
And do we have any idea what a new elementary school potentially would cost?
I do not because we don't even have a statement of interest in. So it would really depend on. Size. Size, you know, certainly, and a lot of specifics before we could get specific information about cost. So at this point, we do know. That the feasibility study, if we get accepted into the MSBA program. To even be considered for it would cost us between one and $2 million upfront and then we would get some level of reimbursement back.
So we do have answers on that now too. For going forward.
Yes, and we. The window for submitting. A statement of interest this year will close before we can finish the process. Because it has to be voted by school committee and city council.
But it, it really doesn't matter since we're not going to do anything immediately anyway. We have another year, right?
We can certainly, the committee can decide that you want me to submit a statement of interest. For the district when it opens again. Midwinter.
Right.
So absolutely, it opens every year. We can submit at any time during any window. It just would need approval, like I said, from school committee and city council.
And, yeah, and the mayor. But I, I'm just saying that now when we go to the school committee with choices. We have totally explored all options. Now, right?
The only piece I've not gotten more detail on is I have the paperwork. That was done when. The MSBA loan or the MSBA project was done for Green River. I have all of the paperwork. But I haven't finished reading it yet. So I will need to give. Additional information about that when I, when I finish reading. The stack of paper that came with it, but that's from 2015 and 19, I believe. So the. Final project cost audit, the final audit was done February of 2019 and the. Project funding agreement was signed in April of 2015, so. But I will go through that and provide the committee with more information. At the, either the next school committee meeting or the next subcommittee meeting, whichever you prefer.
I think that you should give it to the whole school committee because I think. Even if we don't make a decision at the next school committee meeting, I think it's getting time to make a decision. And. We, as a subcommittee, I think have done as much as we can at this moment. That we really need the support of the whole school committee and you should not be off. Playing with every idea somebody comes up with. We should make a choice and go forward.
If, I, I think that we will have. Trying to look at how much longer we have between the next, between now and the next school committee meeting. I think we can have more specific information for the full committee to do. Option one and option two B, a little bit more detail. I'm not suggesting in a week, we're going to have every. Potential scenario responded to, but we can definitely do more detail.
And, and we, and now the public can also come and do public community at school committee. Hearing. I hope what their options will be. Since I see that Mary Byrne is here to tell them what they want to tell us about in the future. We really do want to please the community. Instead of continuing on a what if we do and. My goal would be to give you direct guidance on where we want to go in the future. So that everyone's not wasting time.
And I also like to put these options or at least the next steps. In the next parent update.
Yes. And, and you know, Glenn and Elizabeth, please weigh in and, and. Tell me that you agree, don't agree, or whatever. I, I just don't feel that it's fair to Christine to keep. Going down different paths that we need to make a decision because it's a complicated thing to. Do either. Either one or two B.
Wait, so you're saying that you want us to make a decision? You want us to start ruling things out? Like saying.
I'm saying that we, we need to have the school committee rule things. Out. That we've gone as far as I think we can. We're not the bottom to. Make the final decision. Do you agree with that?
Well, yes. But I don't, I mean, I don't know as, I don't mean, I don't want Christine to go down rabbit holes. For every idea everybody comes up with, but at the same time, I think that we really need to be able to say that we have. Really gone through each option and have something to present pros and cons. Wives for each of them, before we do. Before we present them to be ruled out. I mean, I don't think that we've gotten through it all yet. Do you know what I mean? I think we still have things to discuss. So if you want, are you saying you want to bring to the committee? Say, well, in April, we're going to discuss option one and option two B. And we need you to vote on which one of these to eliminate. And then you want to bring for, bring forward option three and four. B or C or whatever.
If they, if the school committee says they want to keep all options open. And Christine to continue exploring each of them. I think that's what we should do, but I think that. The school committee needs to make a decision on where we go because. This is too many holes for her to keep going down.
I understand, so, but I, I, I personally would feel comfortable ruling things out with the committee. With the full committee if we had. A little mini presentation at a meeting where we said, okay, yes, we have definitively gone down. The holes that we want to go down and we're ready to close some holes, but here are the ones that we've gone down. You know, and here are the pros and the cons, so. I mean, if we just presented it as is, I'd have a lot of questions about option three and four. Because I'm going through them in order. And writing down my questions. I just think that we haven't finished. All the options yet to bring forward. Okay, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do, we shouldn't make these decisions, but I think that. We have a little further to go on the road. And not necessarily chasing down details and going through weeds, but. We need to be able to tell the public in some sort of. Concise presented way. To give them confidence that we have explored all the things that we think are even viable. I don't know, what do you think, Glenn?
I think it's difficult with a decision like this to weigh. How much more information to gather before you make a decision. I see the value of being decisive, but I also see. How momentous the choice that we'll be making is, and so. I think the committee will give us guidance about whether. They're ready to make a decision based on the. Information provided, or are they going to send us back and gather more? I do think it's smart gene to be leaning, leaning towards. Yeah, we do have to make a decision and at some point it may be difficult, but we have to choose. And we can't keep procrastinating by asking for more information. But. For me, the, the most important piece of information I would need is. I mean, I'm not even sure what I personally think, but I think that the committee may need to be. Forced to make a decision on what I was talking about before. You know, where do you wait these problems we're trying to solve? Do you think that the, the problem of the geographic? Distribution of students is the biggest issue, or do you think that? You know, that may be too painful of a choice to, for Greenfield to make to. Have all the schools divided by all this elementary students divided by grades. And that we would prefer just to try to address the issue of. Getting the fifth grade into an elementary school kind of thing, so. That's for me, that's what I most want to hear from the school committee right now.
So Elizabeth, where do you weigh in on Lynn's?
I agree with Glenn and, I mean, we have to make the decision at some point. I just feel like. I don't have enough data. Quite yet to make an informed decision when it comes to the full committee. So if Christine is bringing forward all of the information that she has for option one and two B at the school committee. I would feel like. I probably have enough information about those two. Options, but. I have to echo what Glenn was saying. I'd like to, you know, explore how this affects student achievements. But then I still don't know what option three and four, what remains to be. Well, I guess, I mean, having the information about the Green River School is really great. That's something that we've been trying to. Get to, so I guess I just feel like. Those two points, are we ready to close the book on those? Do we feel like we have enough? On option three and four?
Well, on option three and four, the. The process will be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, the process will be. That next year. We can, we can petition to be part of, we can say we have. A, a problem and we can go to the Massachusetts Building Authority. And ask them to come and help us with making the decision. And it will cost us between one and $2 million to do that. I don't see a spare one or $2 million hanging around. But if you want to continue down that path, we can. I mean, I, I, I personally would prefer that. We continue on with paying staff more money than. Trying to find $2 million to spend on the schools unless there's a windfall somewhere. I mean, I think that sort of answers that question on whether or not we can add on to the schools.
Right, we're just stuck at the. Right, we're just stuck at the, at the wall of money not being there.
Right. And that's just, the $1 or $2 million is just for them to do a feasibility study. It is not, it's not going to give us anything except a study.
Yeah, I think we could at least get, I mean, I, I think that if we, we should get the school committee to vote on, you know, if we just, if we're declaring three and four a dead end, just to declare that, just scratch, officially scratch that off our list. Sounds like that's where we're headed. And then the question is about option one and option two B. And I, I think that is going to be a discussion that we'll have, and I'm not sure if they'll say we're ready to vote on that tonight, and we're, we're going to make a decision at the April meeting, or if they're going to send us back for more research or more deliberation before we come back to them in May or sometime. So I think that we'll have to wait and see where the committee's at and what they're ready for in terms of being decisive.
Go ahead, Christine. Are we at a point where I summarize? I, I guess, if I could, I'm having a little struggle with you folks voting already in April, because the meeting is only basically in a week and a half, and there is still a lot more detail to gather. And we did say that we would present options for the staff to give feedback on. And I think that would be, I, I feel from a, from the perspective of the person who has to put all the spots in the right place, all the, all the things in the right place, I feel like I need more information before I could even say to the committee, this option is potentially going to cost X amount each year. This would be this, this option is XYZ. And I would also like, at that point, to be able to say to you, and I presented both of these choices to all of our staff, and these were the questions, pros, cons, whatever. Is that okay?
Sure, I mean, I have no problem with you doing more information gathering, right, Elizabeth?
Right, well, I, I'm, I agree that we have to make a decision, but I also don't want Christine to feel rushed.
Right.
Or like she doesn't have enough time to, when she presents it, I want her to be able to present it and say, I have completed this journey, and here's where we're at, and like it's squarely in our laps with all the things that we need. And if she needs another month to do that, I mean, I think it's a big enough decision that we should give for the time that she needs. I don't think we should be in a hurry. But at the same time, I understand that we want to move forward. But I think that's sort of a balancing act also, because I know that the staff asked to have more sessions in regards to that. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do as a subcommittee to facilitate that or help with that. I think it's important to say that we, the door was open. We did what we needed to do before we closed everything up.
I think, this is just my thought off the top of my head, but I would like to ask the other administrators their thoughts. I believe we will get feedback from more staff if we do a survey or an online ranking or something along those lines. At least as one of the big pieces, if we do. Optional, we don't have a lot of staff meeting time left for, for this year. And by the time I think we finish gathering the data that would be needed to answer more questions, we will have even less staff meetings left, which would push the potential of the staff feedback to be an optional time. And some folks have, you know, have other commitments that make attending after school on a non-scheduled day challenging. So I would be thinking if we do an online, like here's this, pros and cons, as, as you've talked about, all of you talked about, these are the pros, these are the cons. This is, these are still remaining questions for, for whatever options the committee wants presented like that. And then getting feedback. I also think, given the options under the potential changes under option one for start times, that it would be a good time for me and Karen when we meet with the union, teachers' union and parents' union, and then certainly the other collective bargaining units to talk about. Does this have any impact on our collective bargaining? Do you folks have any questions? I think that would be good. I'd hate to get all the way into the school committee voting and then finding out that we're being perceived as violating elements of some of the collective bargaining agreements.
Works for me.
Okay.
So do, will we even get it done by May? Or would you, or would you, and do you want us to keep meeting? I mean, tell me what, what is helpful for you?
I think it would be helpful to have a subcommittee meeting at least before the May school committee meeting.
Okay.
I think it would be good to present the more detail and present it maybe in the format that would be good to go out to staff for their feedback to you folks, so that you can weigh in if it represents what you're thinking, if you still have other questions, concerns. And then I can put it out to the staff and get that feedback in time for the May meeting.
Okay, I mean, does that work for you, Glenn and Elizabeth, that, that we set up? Let Christine set a date for us to meet to see the options when she has them ready? Just send out, okay, so we leave the ball in your court then, I guess, Christine?
Okay. I want to just summarize, so I make sure we're all clear. I'm going to continue investigating options one and two B. We will have another subcommittee meeting to review the update. Superintendent will share options with staff for feedback, present info to full committee in May. Does that seem right? So I'm going to investigate, I say me, but we all know, all the administrative team that's going to be doing some of this problem solving. We'll have another subcommittee meeting before the May school committee meeting to review. I'll share options with the staff for feedback. And then, and I assume, when I say that, I assume that in between, I will share the summaries out in the parent update. And then we'll share the options with the full committee in there.
Okay.
Is that, do you think that's what you all asked me to do?
Yep, sounds right to me.
Yeah, sounds right.
Okay. All right.
We'll do, this is a big job, and thank you for working with us to try to solve this problem.
Absolutely. Not a problem, as long as I'm clear what you want me to do, we'll do it.
So is there any further discussion? Or do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Well, we didn't do public comment. Is there anyone here, should we ask? I know several people left because they couldn't stay till the end. But should we not offer them that option?
Sure, is there anybody here who would like to speak about? Seeing, seeing no takers.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Only, okay, I guess I have to have a roll call vote. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we're, we are adjourned.